The upcoming election. And then finally, I close by saying, please await my confirmation of the Board of Selectmen vote tonight before issuing the.
Yeah, I'm just curious as to, you know, why this is brought up at all. It sounds, even though it is, it sounds onerous. It is an onerous, and you know that.
Mm-hmm.
Then he called me after you visited him yesterday and asked me about it, and I was kind of taken by surprise. I didn't know anything about it at that time, but looked into it a little bit, and I think put the question-
Well, I did speak to you as well over the weekend.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And putting, you know, over the phone, I mean, I put the question to him, what if you get elected? You're getting this 12 grand as the rescue squad chief. Figures out about 14 bucks an hour, by the way. And this other thing, and I said, are you willing to just give those up? He says, I'll do it for nothing. No compensation or whatever has to be done, assuming, you know, if in the occasion that he gets elected, he's willing, no question, to do whatever has to be done, no matter if it causes giving up compensation of where he gets it elsewhere.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, it's kind of much ado about nothing, really. We could wait, it could've waited until after the election and just dealt with it. So, I was curious to what-
Well, I think it was raised because people had, you know, a number of questions. And for instance, you know, we, the opinion would cover the issue that if he resigned from the post but continued to serve as, you know, as a member of the rescue squad as well, and will cover the areas that would be included within what he has to recuse himself from if he continues with any of those duties. There is a selectman's exemption, and I don't want to do any jailhouse lawyering here-
Right.
Because I, you know, I think, I don't want to be speaking about issues that bear upon an election.
Right.
You know, I want the counsel to do that.
Well, yeah, as you did, as a matter of fact, but-
So, I would, you know, I would suggest that we await the opinion, but I think that my own sense is that it allows him to, you know, to continue to do certain things. But there are questions, and a number of people have asked them, and the town clerk asked them, and I think they're relevant for purposes of, you know, the education of the electorate and, you know, and frankly, to be, you know, fair to the candidate so he knows what he's stepping into.
Well, would it be safe to say that as far as a candidate goes, he's willing to do whatever has to be done, including waiving salaries or anything else, number one?
And I would hope so, because, yeah.
Then, number two, you know, whatever it takes after, assuming whatever the heck happens, you know, he's willing to go along with it. So, it's really no-
I never expected that he would be unwilling to go along with it because the conflict of interests or criminal statute is not optional, of course, to go along with it, you know?
Right.
You have to go along with them. And this was just-
Right.
-to understand what you have to go along with under these circumstances.
But the bottom line, there's no conflict of interest, that there's no conflict of interest. I mean, so he does, let's assume, in the case he gets elected, immediately does what he has to do. There's no conflict. There'll be no conflict.
And again, this is the first, this is to understand what he has to do.
Right.
That's the idea.
Yeah.
What he has to do, what his options are, that sort of thing.
Well-
So, having said that, I would make a motion to authorize the request for an opinion on the conflicts of interest issues, as I had just presented.
I don't think I should vote on this. So, it's up to you two.
Yeah, I just think it's a much ado about nothing, and it's almost, has an aroma of political football. So, I don't, you know, I just don't approve of it at this particular time. Wait until after the election. You may not even have to do it. May not even have to do it.
Well, I guess I would say, I view it as, you know, educational and administrative and getting, you know, getting facts out on the table. And I view, you know, politics as sort of, if you were kind of a superficial manipulation. So, I really see this as fact gathering and administrative and exactly the opposite of that. But I would say that the question that a person asks is often reflective of the person who asked the question.
Well, you know, you're throwing the term around "conflict of interest" enough so that I guess everybody's heard it, so no harm done. I'll second the motion, the seat.
I appreciate that. I think it's the right thing to do.
You did that.
And I, you know, I really do see this as an issue not of getting an issue off the table that could become political if it's uncertain. So, having said that, I-
Would you call for a vote? Do you feel?
I heard a motion.
And a second?
Second, all in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
All right. Mosquitoes.
Yeah. How are they getting in my house when all my windows are closed and screens are up and sit around there swatting mosquitoes?
Madam Chairman, are you for mosquitoes or against?
I am against mosquitoes.
Okay. You picked up a couple votes.
All right.
Joel's gonna send an opinion?
Yes, I'll email, I mean, I already sent this to him, and he will, he said that he could send it if I close the business Thursday, if I let him know tomorrow morning.
Is that just being held until Monday's meeting? Or communicated to the candidate or what?
It, I mean, it certainly, you can communicate it to the candidate, and I think you should copy to the selectman and the town clerk. We'll put it on the agenda to review on Monday, you know, because it'll be part of correspondence.
Want to just let him vote?
Yeah. Walter, we were just discussing that that'll come in, close the business Thursday, and she'll circulate it to the candidate, to the Board of Selectmen and the town clerk.
Good.
My feeling is it's sort of a public document at that point. It'll be on our agenda next Monday as miscellaneous correspondence, and I don't think we need to do anything, anything more than that at this point. Do you?
Nope.
Okay.
All right, so the mosquito control board wants a declaration of support or no support of the mosquito control funding for FY15, which they've never asked for before. Our amount to be deducted from local aid distribution is $30,322. It says that part, so they're required to have a public meeting each year. Part of the policy requires the districts to post a legal notice. They held their budget meeting on January 8th, 2014, in Northborough Free Library. And so now, a revision to this policy for 2012 is the requirement that the districts send out Form SRB-3, which is the one that says budget notification and compliance certification policy. So, they want to know that the chief executive officer of Berlin designates blah blah to sign this declaration, support, do not support the preliminary mosquito control budget proposed and our estimated proportionate share. So, do we support them?
Well, you know, it's 30 grand, Madam Chairman. I'd like to think about it a week. And wait even, and frankly, for 30 grand, I didn't go to the January meeting. I really don't know much about it. I'd like to know what their plans are before I give them 30 grand out of that.
What, is there a deadline for?
For, it's due by the end of April.
And they just got it to us?
No, April 9th they sent it, yeah. Well, it's dated April 9th, let me.
This is the first meeting that, actually, the Board of Health got it before, and they're saying, they'll post it there, is that they support it. And then they forwarded it to us. They got the original mail, we didn't.
Was it addressed to them?
It must've been, because I didn't get it.
What's it saying, go ahead.
It doesn't, it doesn't say anybody.
Okay, that's helpful, isn't it?
And it says that you can, it's kind of confusing. Upon receiving these forms, the SRB will use the information gathered to determine the feasibility of each district's budget request and vote to accept, deny, or modify the budget request.
Do we have previous year figures in there? Did they give those to us?
No. And I don't, I didn't think that we had this taken out of local aid. I thought we paid this, I don't know, we need to go look.
Could we ask-
Comes on the cherry sheet.
Could we ask Mary to just inquire-
If this comes on the cherry sheet?
Yeah.
Apart from, as a separate item?
It's a line item.
Okay. Well, we could do this-
And we can't use it for something else?
No.
Okay. So, we get 30,000 from the state as part of local aid-
Yeah.
-for mosquito control, and they ask for support.
Right.
If we don't support this, we can't use that 30,000 for filling potholes or something like that?
Right.
Okay.
I could give you prior years, too, if you need-
That'd be helpful, and then we could talk about that. Because if we can, if we confirm the fact that this is there, and if we don't use it, we lose it, that's a little-
Well, you confirm that, but I would like some specifics. I mean, just because the money's there, the state taxpayers, well, were suspended. I don't know what they did last year, and-
Last year, we had two cases of equine encephalitis discovered in the mosquitoes. I remember putting it on the webpage, one down by Sawyer Hill. And so they set, I know they set up test thingies around town, and if they find something, then they notify us, and then we put it out to the residents that mosquitoes is-
In my understanding, that is part of the control project, not just spray?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I believe correctly, Boylston wasn't in it, and then they had a really difficult season with mosquitoes, and then they finally coughed up the money and rejoined. But we can certainly look at the previous years and see what the budget was.
All right, can we put it off a week?
Yeah, absolutely.
Before I vote, I just want to know specifics. What have they, what have they got lined up this year? What brook are they going to clean out, or how much spraying do they intend to do, or something like that?
They used to send us a packet of-
Do they have a contact name and number? Because you can give Walter the copy of that.
I'll contact-
You could pull.
I can do it.
Yeah, Mary can do it.
I can do it.
Okay.
Just so we all have it.
Timothy Descamp.
Okay.
Descamp's, whatever his name is. Okay. Approval of the Berlin Fire Company fundraiser car wash at the fire station on April 26th.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
You get to sign that. Giving permission to the Berlin Lions to hold their annual toll booth fundraiser in the center of town on Saturday, May 3rd, from 9:00 to 1:00. Rain date, May 10th.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Northbrook Village 2.
The very last communication in miscellaneous correspondence, the notice of foreclosure, the intent to foreclose, that you sent to me today.
Yeah. That she sent to me.
Yeah.
Sorry, who's, who sent what?
Oh, no, not, that's Sawyer Hill. This is Northbrook Village.
Oh, wrong one, sorry.
I'm trying to remember what Eloise told me today about this. I think that if we want to get them moving, we need to say that we're in favor of the foreclosure on the property and that we want it bought. I think this was the key thing she wanted to emphasize, that we want it bought by a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. And that we want the housing in it to be, what's it called?
Assisted living?
Or low income or stiff-
Affordable.
Affordable. We want it to be counting towards our affordable housing. So, she thought maybe we should write a letter to try to move this along.
Yeah?
Yeah, I think so.
So, this just says that they talked to the, I think this is one that we've had before. This was something where you wanted to talk about to move the process along.
Oh, yeah. Oh, I just, you know, we can send letters, too, to bureaucrats all we want, but we don't call, you know, our state, a federal congressperson and senator. Notify them or copy them and let them help a little bit, you know?
That's a good idea. If we write the letter, we'll send it to our congressman.
God, who is that senator? Who is that congressman? So, it used to be Nikki Songus.
It is, isn't it?
But still Nikki Songus.
Is it Nikki?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Send it to Nikki Songus and, and send it to our state reps, because you should send it to HUD and DHCD. I don't know who in HUD we could send it to. I'm sure that if you call this Roland, whatever his ganger, the Hicks associate person, that he should have some. Yep.
Yeah, squeaky wheel gets degrees, so if we don't remake some more noise and see if we-
Tragic to have it sitting there, spending money on a guard 24 hours and-
They say they cost $3,000 a week, I heard.
Yeah.
I don't know if that's true or not, but it's outrageous.
This is where I interject my misery?
Sure. We love Missouri.
So, last Monday night, the Board of Assessors voted to put Northbrook Village 2 on the tax rolls for October 1st.
Okay.
One, because for the past two years, they have failed to file their required 3ABC, 4MPC, public charities, no documentation for Monticuse at Home Services. I assume, because they've distanced themselves from all of this court action or something, they won't even call us back, all of the people that we know to get in touch with. So, and we have a three-page letter from the Board of Directors, which kind of identifies in the middle of that summary of the issues-ish problem, that HUD and DHCD suggest that, or recommend strongly that Northbrook Village 2 find a 501(c)(3) purchaser. Yet, a nonprofit organization does not meet tax exempt status by virtue of being nonprofit. So, it would have to be a nonprofit organization that would provide services-
That were nonprofit, purpose.
As Monticuse would have done-
Purpose, yes.
-in order to maintain that to be a tax exempt status. The reason why I was allowing them to be tax exempt is because on Mass General Law, you can, for a charitable organization, that it's in the process of providing your service on a new construction project-
Yeah.
-you can allow them the two years to get to the point where they're offering, which is everything you all intended to provide.
Yeah.
But unfortunately, we can't, you know, continue to go that route. So, as of October 1st, there'll be a bill. There is a right to an appeal, as with any-
Who are you gonna send that bill to?
To Northbrook Village 2 Incorporated and just add to the lean misery of the corporation, I guess, but-
Yeah.
That's all I have, I'm unable to do.
No, because it's a narrow window in which-
Right.
Building something for a charitable purpose qualifies as a charitable purpose.
Yeah, miscellaneous.
Right.
Okay.
So, there is a copy of that letter in the file, so you could-
Okay.
-could see that, but I just thought, since it was on the agenda, I would let you know that-
That's great.
-been sent certified mail and-
Is there still a function in the committee?
I don't know that.
So, who did you actually send that to?
I sent it to Greg Giuliano of Monticuse. Because as far as I know, the, they're still part of the project, but I, that's what I was told to do by Eloise.
Do you have any names, I'm sorry, but do you have any names to send your letter to, to DHCD or HUD?
Well, this email is simply from Eloise, which is a forward from Roland-
Gagnier.
G-A-G-N-I-E-R.
I think it's Gagnier.
Gagnier of Hicks Associates, who's in Boston. So, I mean, I guess we could ask Eloise if she has any more names. I was counting on that when I got frail and elderly.
Now, you gotta hang on for a little while, yeah?
Yep.
Well, thank you for sharing that misery.
Yes, thank you for your misery.
You hung around and rejected that.
There is more misery.
Oh, no, no, I think you have to go home.
We're dealing with one other one. Okay, we have a fax, Venderson and the FY14 mitigation invoice.
I will, I will get that out. I was away for a good week last week. I did read over all that stuff and read through the stuff, so I know how to answer. I think, yeah, and I don't have that answer, but it's-
So, he's just kicking back on the cost of living percentage we use?
No, I think he's just asking us to explain it. I, I think I, I think I know-
He signed it?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so just to explain it and why we're applying it. So, I will, I did look at it on the train on the way home, so I know what I'm gonna say now, but-
Clifton Larson Audit and Management Letter. Am I skipping this? This is the food pantry report.
Oh, Eric.
Is that somewhere in here?
Yeah, no, it should've been in there. It should've been in there with the highway, which I put in miscellaneous.
Okay. So, we have a written copy of the auditor's report, management report.
We had that last week, and Walter said that you wanted to talk about that some more, about the management letter, about what their findings were and what their recommendations were.
Probably the same stuff as last year.
If it's, it doesn't sound like it's critical, but if it isn't, then we should deal with it, with all the checks and balances, all right?
Well, we got the transfer station, which is on here every year, deficiencies relating to financial accounting activities. There's no procedures to reconcile the financial accounting activities, to the collection of cash receipts, prenumbered receipts are not utilized and provided to the customer, schedule of departmental payment to the treasurer is not accompanied by supporting documentation. I mean, it's all-
Isn't that all done down the police department now?
No, I think they're talking about the disposal-
Mattresses and all that stuff.
We have, in past years-
Right.
We had the exception, you know, applying to collecting and dumping.
Right.
We addressed that because there was, you know, there was a, you know, there was a way to address that.
Right.
It, you know, this is something that the auditors have raised, but by the same token, and certainly other people thinking about it have better ideas. I mean, it's kind of really hard. Somebody shows up with a mattress and-
No, I, you know, I agree with you. And if you read through the various laws governing municipal employees and elected officials and everything, there's lots of exemptions for small towns, you know? We have to make things happen, and I think there's probably enough checks and balances.
Yeah, the previous discussions that we had, Walter, were, you know, this is not big money, you know, what we get from disposing a mattress or disposing white goods or whatever. It's not, you know, it's not a risk to the sort of financial bottom line of the town.
Okay.
But to do anything, that, anything that we've been able to think of, and I welcome it, if you have some great ideas, please.
No, I know, I didn't realize that that's what it was.
The idea was, anything we would do would be, would create such inconvenience and would discourage recycling and stuff like that. So, that's why we hadn't done it before. You know, you never have a perfect grade on these things, and that's one that we've just never been able to figure out how to address to their satisfaction.
So, this is from June 30th, 2013, and we actually-
I knew it sounded familiar.
We actually did respond to this stuff.
Yes, we did.
Forms and procedures have been modified and documented to reconcile transfer station receipts to the collection, and additionally, all receipts-
Yeah.
Yeah, so, did you read, I don't know if you, there's our response. This is all.
Okay, all right.
Well, and the one thing was that you voted to allow June to come up with a set of financial policies, and that's a selectman's piece of the letter.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
Yeah, we, so we'll have another one of these.
Yeah, sounds, we'll have another one, and then there'll always be some, some little thing.
Right. I like to have to go in and pay with a check when I'm bringing something down, and I have to come up with something about it or anything else.
Well, some people who don't have checking accounts, you know, need to pay with cash or, you know, so it's-
Yeah, yeah.
I have no problem.
Oh, let's see, we'll start miscellaneous correspondence. The FinCom FY13 Reserve Fund. So, we have all this stuff from the-
I think I emailed that to all of them.
Which I think we all were, emailed a copy of. I don't know if you want to go through all this. We have the budget, the FinCom letter, the town report, the reserve fund usage from them.
Oh, yes, while I'm thinking about it, just because the FinCom and the budget reminded me of annual town meeting. And I think I emailed you about it, that I think usually we meet at 6:30. We posted for 6:30 in the cafeteria. Walter said that we have half an hour to do the selectman's business that, that week before we have to go into the special town.
I saw your email.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted-
I fixed that on the calendar.
Okay. Yep.
We have from Mass Municipal Association, something about Transportation Conference Committee agrees to 300 million for Chapter 90. That's B, I'm just trying to keep through. Selectment EMACC regarding the Tennessee Gas Pipeline.
I just asked for us to be on the email alert list of anything that they, that group gets.
Who is EMMAC?
Mass Association of Conservation Commissioners.
Okay.
Did you happen to see the Gold article today?
No.
It's the Energy Chief bemoans region infrastructure, and the, he spoke in Connecticut, basically, New England area is so under service by transmission, be it gas, electric or otherwise, you know? So, it's going to be quite a lot of pressure to get that up here.
Yeah.
No, I see, did read.
All righty, Gas Pipeline, Treasurer's April 16th email regarding the annual town meeting financial articles.
From the, from this hospital bed, I think, just responding on-
You forwarded those to us?
I think I did. If not, I can.
Yeah, why don't you, you know?
Well, do you want me to read any of mine?
Not particularly. No, I don't drive down happy to if anybody else does.
Would you like to hear it?
You're asking for more email.
I will send them to you.
I will, yeah. Yeah. Because if she reads it, I have to listen. If you send it, I don't have to read it.
We have a building inspector-
But I won't read it, I just-
Subject, mass housing, Berlin Woods. Please find the developer's responses to your questions. How many units have been built and sold? This is about Berlin Woods. It's a 32-unit project. There are 20 units are built and 17 of them have been sold. Of the 17 units, four affordable units are now occupied. A fifth affordable will close on April 28th, and 13 market rate units are now occupied, and two more will close by the end of the month.
So consequently, you never get ahead of the curve?
Nope.
Never get ahead of the curve?
No, not unless you, not unless you have rental, you know?
Yeah.
Or something like, you got, I mean, you just, just barely, barely do they offset themselves.
Yeah, yeah.
So, the final one is, is construction complete? He says there's 12 more units to be built. Four have foundations, and the developer plans to soon pull building permits for the remaining eight. And two of them are affordable. Well, actually, there's one that's affordable and the four foundations that are in, and there's two on the remaining eight units that are going in. Whoops. I don't pile in these all.
That's all right, don't worry about the order now, it doesn't-
I think everything's over here, but, okay.
While you're checking, could you throw me over this, so I don't walk out and sign this?
Okay, this is from the selectman to the town administrator in Southampton, copying the webmaster.
Yeah, they're looking to hire your webmaster to help South Hampton, Massachusetts, retool their website, so.
Because they liked ours so much.
They liked Garth so much.
Garth, I received the most complimentary call regarding your website design this morning from Heather from the town administrator's office in Southampton. They'd like to talk to you about possibly retaining your services.
So, shall we say to Garth that we'll, we'll accept his volunteer services and resell them to- So shall we say to Garth that we'll, we'll accept his volunteer services and resell them to? That is a great compliment.
It is a great compliment. Janet Pierce from Central Mass Regional Planning, twenty fifteen procurement opportunities. And this is from the selectmen saying that at this point, we are interested in their heating oil, burner and boiler maintenance, generator maintenance, and elevator maintenance. So we'll see what they come up with. An urgent budget alert from Mass MMA about the house debate begins Monday, April twenty-eighth. Pothole money, a new wrinkle to the pothole money. Only work that takes place after the initial letter was sent out, which is early April, is eligible for pothole money. So if some material was used in March to fill potholes, then you will not be reimbursed for that.
Right.
So it's like twenty-nine thousand dollars that you would have to find a way to use.
Yeah.
Maybe we should dig some big, big potholes.
Right. There's a lot of, there's a lot of potholes around, you know. I think his issue is just scheduling the work.
Well, South Street is one big pothole, so they could, yeah.
Division of Local Services, City and Town. We have.
Just letting you know, there's another electrician assigned to that project.
So we have an applicant, Department of Fire Services, application for permit to perform electrical work. This is on River Road, so this is the solar.
Yep, just a new company.
Alden Electric pulled the permit.
Al was our representative in Naughton's office, and I got a voicemail this afternoon from Emily, his aide, saying that he was not gonna be able to attend tonight, and that he'd be looking to see if you'd all like to meet with him at some point in May. And she wanted to know your wishes, and I can let her know if you'd like to meet with him in May.
Well, does he have something to tell us?
Maybe more materialized by then, I don't know.
Well, we could pencil in a date for May and see what develops.
Do you wanna pick out a May date? So that, that article that I'd sent you before saying that he was on a list of reps and senators who was briefed is incorrect. That newspaper article, that, I guess whoever wrote the article or editorial was taking the word of the company, but Naughton's office says they weren't even invited to be briefed.
Hmm, okay.
So maybe there isn't much to say? I don't know.
All right.
Well, it's. So we meet the fifth, the twelv-, well, the fifth is, I don't know if you already have.
Oh, it's the nineteenth?
Yeah, why don't we, why don't we, you know, maybe at least try to pencil something in on the nineteenth, and if we get there and feel there isn't much to talk about, then we can always.
We have an email from today. He'd appreciate it after the middle of May because, you know, budget hearing, budget sessions are going on and.
No, that's good, because then.
Family sickness and.
Yeah, so let's try the nineteenth, because then the next week gets into Memorial.
Seven thirty or so?
Yeah, seven thirty would be good.
Okay, I'll see.
We have a CBA hearing notice for One Hundred River Road West, which is spooky world, the house, right? It's a public hearing on May fourteenth at eight PM on the petition of Berlins Village regarding its property at One Hundred River Road. They want a variance on the Table of Dimension Regulations, which requires a minimum lot acre of eighty thousand square feet. They seek a variance for seventy-six, four seventy square feet.
They're looking to subdivide it into three lots, keeping the house intact, willing to put a historical restriction on it. And try to save the bond, but this, more or less has, the way it was explained to me is that it's more refinancing is more important. In the meantime, he's working very hard and I'm working with him, trying to get something going that would protect the whole farm as it is, you know.
That'd be great. I'd heard some conversation that people were looking at putting a brewery there.
Microbrewery, right? That's what we're looking at.
We could move selectmen's.
I know.
We have the highway report for March. Okay.
Can I have that, please? Take it, take it home.
Did I not forward that to everybody?
No, I didn't.
I could forward that to everybody.
Yeah, didn't notice it.
We have a note from the webmaster, saying that he tweaked some settings and now the website load times are significantly faster than before. And he talks a little bit about the Southampton Courier website, and I guess that's pretty much it.
Well, he also sent an email tonight saying that, with regard to the Facebook shell of a page I created for the selectmen's office, he said that he could take information that he's getting and he's putting on the website and put it on Facebook. So he's willing to tie in the two so that Facebook traffic can take off, so that information just, you don't have to seek out the town's website page. It would, you know, grow legs and walk off on Facebook by itself, information.
Sounds good to me.
If you want me to look into that.
How would that work?
You're not familiar with Facebook?
I don't know anything about Facebook, but.
It, would it do, take, take a life of its own?
When you, when you. Well, yeah, because it can be shared and shared and shared. I mean, the, the way that the website is now is people basically have to visit it.
Yeah.
And you wouldn't necessarily know when it's updated.
Yeah.
Versus, although he says there's a feature where if somebody wanted to enroll for updates, they could send an email alert saying there's something new, there's something new.
Okay.
But whereas if, he could take every single thing that he updates on Facebook and dump it, I'm, I'm sorry, on the town's website and dump it into Facebook so that people would see it and could share it. And like it, share it, put on their own post, their own.
The more sunshine, the better, whatever he wants to do.
Okay.
Let's see. I asked Mary to put on our April twenty-eighth agenda, to appoint the Board of Fire Engineers, since it was pointed out to me that, according to state law, they need to be appointed in April to start in May first. And I asked to find out if they all wanted to be reappointed.
From there?
I don't know.
Oh, you asked, okay.
Yeah.
But it has been answered, okay.
And Mary sent out a thing saying that we want to discontinue the PO box, and if anybody else was using it or had a concern, to come and see her.
Most people don't seem to have a problem with it. Barry just cautioned that the bulk mail permit seems to be tied to the PO box, but not our street address. I think I could change that with the postmaster.
Yeah.
But the rental for that, oh, that's the bulk mail permit. I mean, the rental has already been paid for the year. I don't think you get it prorated back or not. It's eighty-eight dollars for the year, but.
Well, I did, what, what comes there versus what comes to?
It's just hit or miss. Like, it could be, it's anything. It's just that whoever in the past has had box two seventy-four continues to send them there.
Yeah, might as well get forwarded anyway, so.
I, that's what Walter was told.
What's that?
That the webmaster would take anything that was supposed to go to that PO box and just send it to our street address.
Yeah.
Well, you need to put in a change of address.
Yes, if you were to, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, do whatever's necessary.
Yeah.
They're kinda hit or miss, because sometimes I get things from my previous address, which is my same house, but a different street, and sometimes I don't.
I mean, if you want, I could take postcards and start sending things back to people who, to alert them.
Or just start changing things now.
Oh, well, I already did, like, our last envelope, our last stationary order, we dropped off the PO box.
When is the PO box renewed?
It renewed already in the fall.
But we can get quite a bit of it back and, and change.
It was eighty-eight dollars, but you're spending it on mileage for me going down there every month. It's twenty dollars a month in mileage for me to go back and forth to the post office box. And I can't get there every day, and it's just lost time away for me out of the office versus being open.
Are they gonna give you a refund for the part you know of use?
I don't know, I didn't, I didn't really get that far up.
To get twenty bucks back.
Go for it. Just don't drive down to ask for it. Okay.
All right.
Listen, going back, where is that one? Okay, item P, the letter regarding the appointment of the fire engineers. When do they want to be appointed?
Well, it's state law, that they be appointed in April.
It's state law?
Yes, that is Mass General Law.
It seems with an election right around the corner, that if, you know, the board stays the same it was, we know what's gonna happen. Of course, I'll vote against it anyway. But it's long overdue for some new blood on there. But I would oppose, I'll have to read that, I don't know.
That's pretty, it's, you can take that, it's right, it's under the Mass General Law.
All right, take that, and we'll put it on the agenda for next week, so you got a week to think about that. If you have any questions in the meantime, wanna talk to either of us.
Did you ever plan in April before?
We never knew that you were, well, I don't know.
There may, there may.
I think we did, maybe, when I first came on, because I, I do seem to remember there was, we dealt with the fire engineers. Again, it's probably, it's now, eleven, twelve years ago. I, I do seem to remember that we would do fire, because Peggy did it all, you know, but, but I do seem to remember we got fire engineers at a separate meeting from the rest.
I'll look it up, I'll see.
I talked to Eloise, and she said that, she gave me a whole history of when the calendar wasn't a fiscal year calendar, and there were things that got appointed at different times, and this is one that's never been changed.
Okay.
Where are we? Upcoming Board of Selectmen meeting dates through September.
Those are, okay to me. How about you, Walter?
The one after Memorial Day, I think I incorrectly emailed to you as being on a Monday when it's a Tuesday after Memorial Day.
Yeah, we went through this last week.
Yeah, yeah, just confirming it.
She just confirmed that.
Sure.
Where am I?
Well, we passed P.
S, yeah, on S now.
S.
So this is an insurance question.
Yeah, the firefighters wanna know if workers' cop coverage would protect them in the event of injury at a muster.
And did we?
No, I'm gonna answer back. Yeah, I'm asked, I asked if it be FAS and.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would, I would think because it's a sort of a species of training that they probably would, but.
I don't think that the people that muster are the same people that are on our fire department.
And there's a women muster team, and there's other things, and I guess they need to provide proof of coverage to the event organizers.
'Cause wasn't Val, didn't Val do a muster? I thought I saw pictures.
She did muster years ago.
Yeah, on the women's team, so, yeah, they weren't regular. All right.
This is the echo.
Sawyer Hill forty B release.
They have a date now in front of the CBA.
Okay.
And CBA has a copy of our letter of support, presumably, right?
No, I will get that to them, good point.
Yeah, they, they should get it. And, yeah, let us do, let, let me know when the date is, I'd be happy to go. It's, is it May fourteenth?
May fourteenth, yeah.
Okay, May fourteenth. All right.
Okay, we have a letter from the Board of Assessors to Northbrook Village, too. Which we talked about tonight.
Yes.
The fired company is having their fifth annual firefighter memorial service on May eighteenth, begins at nine thirty with a breakfast to follow. It's a national day of remembrance, and if you wanna attend, reply by May ninth. And we have a new map of the gas pipeline coming through town. We have something from.
Boars.
Boars. There's a sixth annual Wild and Scenic Film Festival, Wednesday, April thirtieth, at the Summer, the Maynard Fine Arts Theater in Summer Street. And finally, I forwarded this, I got it from Sawyer Hill, from Maggie Cone, where she says that she works for the Cooperative Fund of New England, which holds the mortgage on Sawyer Hill. And Sawyer Hill has been diligently working to pay off their debt and to sell three remaining units, which all carry forty B restrictions. She understands the Board of Selectmen's been very helpful by trying to help remove the restrictions, and they have mailed out a letter stating an intent to foreclose, which she's attaching to DHCD, the LLC, and to us. The attorney believes this will facilitate the process of removing forty B restrictions, so the units may be sold more easily.
Okay.
All right, is that it?
I do not have anything else I can think of.
I have a couple of things, but.
What, you were going, you were demanding a letter from a town council on how to resolve collection of rescue squad.
Yeah, and I need to do that.
Last week.
Yep, I haven't done it.
I had asked Joel to provide it by Thursday last week.
Yeah.
I don't have it.
And you haven't heard from him?
I've been talking to Joel in the next couple of days. I say, I didn't, I didn't have that in my head when, but we can rattle his caves this week.
Are they too busy to handle a little town like this?
Well, I, I think that too busy is, is going around. Gary Brackett is ill, I don't know if you've heard that, so there. And what's his name? The fellow who's representing Maplewood was bemoaning that. Yeah, they, they, they lost a couple of key people to state.
Oh, the medical marijuana.
Well, yeah, and there were a couple others who went to, went into state service, so I think they're, I think they're, they're, they're treading water, and I think it's been uneven. I mean, you know, look at Diane, I think has been very, very pleased with, you know, the level of support on the pilot and all of that.
All right.
I think smaller things that aren't urgent tend to get, that they don't perceive as urgent, tend to get churned under, but I, I'll, I'll remind them of that.
Second thing, Adam Chairman, you were gonna write up a job description so we could advertise for a full-time electrical inspector. Does that come along? We should get that off of the.
I got a lot of papers.
A lot of papers.
I will try to merge them all and email it out to everyone, and then you guys can do your wordsmithing, and we can discuss it next week.
Okay.
Wanna do it next week?
Yeah, yeah.
So I only have.
All right, so.
And then I will, oh, sorry, just, just for.
Go ahead.
I will have, after quite a hiatus, I will have, I believe, three Taha teachers negotiating sessions in, in May, is, is what the schedule is. They've, there wasn't really anything in April because they couldn't get parties together.
So I put in a Green Communities grant last week for a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. Seventy-eight thousand goes to the public safety building. The ceiling has plastic and fiberglass, and the plastic is supposed to be the vapor barrier, and they stapled it. So there's holes in it, and there's holes where it meets pipes and all that other stuff, so they basically said, they, they did all these temperature reading things and were basically heating the attic. So part of that, that seventy-eight thousand is gonna do the building envelope. The eighteen-seventy town hall has money in it for their building envelope. And then there's, they call them turbo blowers. They're these, like, blowers that hang in the ceiling. There's eleven of them for Berlins Memorial School for all of the areas that have between sixteen and twenty-foot ceilings. So it'll take the hot air and blow it down, and it'll reduce, the readings they had where there was like a fifteen-degree difference between the ceiling and the floor, so it says it reduces that to about three degrees. So that's a competitive grant, and we won't find out until the end of June if we got it. And the other thing is, we have, last week, last week, we declared the Crown Victoria surplus.
Yeah.
So I looked at the two, there's two auction sites, Munisibid and Public Auction, and the Munisibid one looked easier for us to use, and it also looked like it had more action on it. It charges the buyers an eight percent fee. We don't pay anything to put our stuff on it. I guess I'm asking for your agreement.
And it's compliant with.
It's all compliant. There's a whole bunch of towns.
That sounds, that sounds fine to me.
So I would post that there's gonna be an auction on our town webpage, on the cable, and I think we should probably still put an ad in the paper and say that the car is up on this Munisibid website. So normally when we're selling something, we put an ad in the paper.
Yes.
So I think we should still, some of the stuff I read said that, just to cover yourself, you put an ad in the paper and say that it's on Munisibid.
Okay, I don't have a problem with that one.
All righty.
So voted, or?
So voted, well, I'll move to dispose of the surplus Crown Vic in the manner outlined by the. in the manner outlined by the, uh, Chairman.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, and then my final piece is, when-
Is, on the energy stuff, are you submitting that as a selectman?
Well, yeah, my name's on it, but the-
I mean, only, yeah, I ask, it's very interesting, and it's very important, you know, I, I'd just like to know a little bit more about it sometime.
I have, um, I have the whole audit I can email to you.
Yeah, I'll link that.
Yeah, I mean, we talk about it at the Energy Committee, but someone has to do the submitting, and I've been doing the submitting.
Okay. Who's on the Energy Committee?
Myself, Chris Oriol, Eloise, um, Amy, Amy, well, there's somebody else. And Bill Anderson attends the meetings, but won't be a member.
Yeah, it's important.
Well, I mean, part this, this roof thing is also the reason that we think that there's, um-
Ice dams?
Ice dams.
Yeah.
Because it's so warm.
It heats the attic and-
Yeah.
So-
No, similar to that, leave, just like at my house, that.
Well, and you know, we've done, we've put electric things on that roof, and we've never, ever actually thought that it was because it was losing all that heat up into the attic. At least I never. So.
Yep.
Okay, so when we became a green community, we voted a fuel-efficient vehicle policy. And I have to submit an annual report to them every year. And in the fuel-efficient vehicle policy, I said that we would track mileage and fuel usage, but we didn't track fuel usage because we don't have a way to track it by vehicle. They go to different gas stations. I mean, it would be very clunky, and then, I, I know that the fire department was telling me sometimes, they do track, they're the only group that actually tracks their mileage, and I guess they put the mileage in at the, whatever the reader is when they're- And that sometimes they put the more, the wrong numbers in, and you either end up with like five thousand miles per gallon or-
Yeah, yeah.
So I need to, from my green communities coordinator, I need to update this fuel-efficient vehicle policy. Do you have any problem if I update it and bring it in next week and just say that we're gonna track the annual miles driven? And not the total fuel consumption?
I have no objection, I don't know how you can-
Yeah, I mean, if that's acceptable to them, I think-
Yes, it's if they just-
If they do it, then I think that's fine.
Okay.
And we'll vote on it next week.
Yep.
Okay.
Okado. All righty.
It'd be even difficult to, to use the standard miles of our equipment, as if somebody might have, like, one of our trucks, contractors hauling long distances, we're stop and go, back up, turn around, you can't, you can't keep the mileage.
Well, all of our vehicles are exempt. We don't own any actual non-exempt vehicles, because all we have are fire trucks, police cars, and highway vehicles. But they still wanted a policy.
Yep.
So.
Well, they got it.
Yep.
Yep. That's it for me.
Good for me.
I give up.
All right. Then, um, I would move to adjourn.
And I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.